Mayor Querem, Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mabry, Commissioner Fabia, Commissioner Newman.
May I stand and talk to the resolution?
The legislative leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Scott. Just need your name.
Scott, just slightly switch on top toward you. There we go. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Scott Wrighton. During the day, I serve as City Manager in Streeter, Illinois, but I'm here representing the Star Rock Country Alliance along with my friend Rick Brooks, who you know very well. And I rise on the occasion of the fact that the Small Business Development Center, which has been housed at Illinois Valley Community College for several years, is going out of business at the end of December. And several of us associated with Star Rock felt like it was important for our region to have an organization that supports businesses, that helps particularly entrepreneurs and startups, because it was important to have an agency, an office, a counseling assistance even, that helps somebody develop a business plan, helps somebody project their cash flows, and deal with some of the problems that small businesses have when they get started. And all of us, all of our communities, certainly mine, certainly yours, want to foster and nurture small businesses so that they can grow and become even larger employers in our respective communities. The model that was used for the Small Business Development Center was to house it at IDCC and sort of roughly serve the same jurisdiction as IDCC's district. And we have decided that it would be far more, greater benefit to our region if it could be more decentralized and focus more on training and outreach. And so the Star Rock Country Alliance is trying to put together a proposal, the key elements of which is that we would have a presence in at least five communities in the region. And I'm here today, Mayor, because we'd like Princeton to be one of them. The five communities in what we would hope to call the Bureau de Salle Livingston, Small Business Development Center. The idea is that instead of having it at a community college where you say, okay, folks, if you want to learn about this stuff, then come and we'll make an appointment with you, instead have somebody in Princeton one day a week, in Peru one day a week, in Ottawa one day a week, Streeter one day a week, and Pontiac one day a week. Just as sort of an anecdotal story, we opened a business incubator in former Illinois National Guard building in our community. And it's actually gone very well. We expect it to be at full by the end of the year. But as we have met with small businesses that have located there and in their prospects, several of them will say, you know, I know I need to put together a business plan, your requirements for being in the incubator, or that we have these sorts of things, but who can I rely on for that? Who can give me assistance with that? I think it would be very nice if I could say, well, you know, one day a week, there's going to be somebody from the Small Business Development Center be here, right here in the incubator, or right at the Westlock Building in Peru, or the EDC Building in Pontiac, or wherever you might decide, here in Princeton, to provide that kind of assistance. And oftentimes, these are small business ideas or entrepreneurial concepts that have been germinating in somebody's mind in their garage or their basement for many years. They can wait till next Thursday for that one day a week. So that's one major feature of how we want to revise this Small Business Development Center. And the other, which really has been some of the brainchild of Rick Brooks, is to incorporate far more training and specialize the counseling both online and directly with small businesses so that some of the skills that they need that are beyond the sorts of courses they take at IDCC can be delivered directly to them right where they're at. I've given Rachel sort of a two-page summary of this, but I didn't want to pass it out because I know that when you do that, right before you speak, people read that instead of listening to what you're saying. But when we met last month with your city manager, and the proposal that we're making to both of those five communities is that there was an investment from each of those five communities, and that would be sort of like a fee for service. I will speak about Streeter specifically in terms of what we've decided to do is split the $10,000, the five are coming from the city, and five are coming from our Economic Development Corporation. In Pontiac, I think they're going to split it between the County Economic Development Council and the City of Pontiac. It doesn't matter to us at Star Rock how that's done, we just think that if there could be that kind of base funding, then each community knows that this is what they get. The final thing that I want to mention is that there are several programs that I think can help feed this even more than has been done with the SBDC and IDCC. And that is, there's a program, for example, called Future CEO, which is an outreach to the high school, where students can learn about, as they have an interest in being a small business, being an entrepreneur, to learn some of those skills early on so that even by the time they're out of high school, they can start to be some of the folks that would be working to develop the businesses so they can stay in their hometowns. And so the person that has a presence in each of these five communities would not only have one-on-one meetings, but also do some of that community outreach as a part of the commitment to each of the host cities. I know you have limited time and you have a busy agenda, so I just want to, again, maybe ask Rick to come up here and mention some of the other things that were part of our proposal, and then see if you have any questions for us.
I'll be very quick. The whole notion is to be responsive to all the communities that participate. We'd like to have training in the basics, but also some innovative approaches for small businesses to partner with other businesses. We'd like to recruit cadre of 40 or 50 mentors throughout the three county region to work with small businesses and startups. We hope to have at least a couple of business expos each year, and we would want to provide those in different communities. I would like them to start here in Princeton. So there's a lot that's in the hopper and is possible, but it's meant to serve each community more directly and to have, work with chambers and other groups that are already in place, but to give some advice in depth and breadth in kind of counseling and mentoring that small businesses need to survive. So I think it'd be great if Princeton and Bureau County and folks in this part of the area would participate in this type of event. It's up to time for you.
Mayor, the current SBDC comes to an end and will close out their grant on December 31st. We are certainly desirous of having a new organization start as soon thereafter as possible, given the startup requirements. It might not happen on January 1st, but I don't think a small gap is fatal in any way what we're trying to do. So I think the answer to your question is, as soon after January 1st as we practically and logistically can.
Scott has some conversation with the state and the development folks. This isn't a competition against other areas. Essentially, if we could put a viable proposal together, there's a better-than-reasonable chance that it would be funded, to put it that way.
Funding actually, it comes through the state, but it's actually federal Small Business Administration funds. And because a couple of other SBDCs have closed in the state, primarily because they were also terminated by their host community colleges, I believe actually there's probably a surplus of funds from the SBA for this. So as Rick said, as long as we meet all the requirements, dot all the i's and cross the t's, and fill out these applications the way they have to be filled out, I think it's going to be funded. But in order to do so, we have to put together the local match. And basically, the local match is for every 75 cents that comes from local communities and other sources, we receive $1 in funding. Thanks. Any other questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
If you don't want to, you don't have to sit around.
Okay. I get to cook a lot as city council speaker.
Sure you'd like to.
I will.
Any other public comments? It will go to Commissioner Newman for approval next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on August 15th, the minutes for the special meeting on August 16th with exceptions, and the minutes of the council meeting on Saturday, August 20th with exceptions. Exceptions are just in years, and in typing, we get, use the template to write the minutes, and the minutes still have Mayor Kane in there, so that's obviously the night. So we're just going to straighten it all out.
Motion's been seconded. Any corrections?
Okay, Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman. I'm Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go to the people that invoice, the approval invoices. I'll go to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I have the invoices for public affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances. In the money department, $15,026.54. Administration, $17,618.20. Self-insurance, $155,758.60. Economic development, $1,500. Tourism, $2,645.30. Crime department, $2,748.86. No expenses in community development. Lovejoy, $703.93. Homestead, $12,589.42. For grand total for invoices for public affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances of $208,590,040. Mayor, I've reviewed these bills. I find them to be true and accurate, and move that to be paid.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
I'm Mayor Querem.
Aye. Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening, I have the bills and payrolls for Department of Streets and Public Improvement as follows. The street department, a total of $39,603.20. Wastewater collection, $23,149.51. Wastewater treatment, $60,281.81. Cemetery department, $17,346.11. And garbage expenditures of $9,737.93. For grand total of $150,118.38. Mayor Querem, I've examined the bills and payrolls, find them true, correct, and request payment be made.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. I'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the bills for public health, $0.02. For the police department, I have $59,912.42. Fire ambulance department, I have $711,905.81. For a total of $771,818.23. I have reviewed these bills. I believe them to be true and accurate. I move that to be paid.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. And I have the bills and payrolls for the Public Property Utilities. Electric generation of $30,137.91. Electric distribution of $49,520.51. Electric administration of $26,688.83. Water treatment of $29,577.14. Water distribution of $3,009.88. And water administration of $2,768.20 for a grand total of $141,9694.47. I've examined these bills. I believe them to be true, and move that to be paid.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
I'm Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. And I'll go to regular business. I'll go to Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. And now I have ordinance O-16-015. It is an annual budget ordinance amendment. It is routine practice to review revenues and expenditures and a warranted amended execution of the approved budget to reflect the actual and updated financial obligations for the remainder of the budget period. This is an extensive document. When it's all said and done, our $22 million budget has been modified to the tune of about $111,000. I move that we approve the first reading of this ordinance.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments?
I'll just make a few comments. So part of doing this is once we get the declare 2015-16 actual things, so they don't have those when the budget is approved, so you look at what was actually spent and adjust the things. Revenue has been decreased when you look at what actually came in. I adjusted some revenues, but wasn't over projected this fiscal year. And so then some expenditures were changed as well. There's detailed groups, line item, when that was changed. There's also proposed fund balances in there, so then we can set a target for ourselves and try to meet those fund balances in the future. And then coming down the road, there'll be an ordinance adapting those fund balances as well. I think that's all I have. Any other questions?
Would you say that this is a working document, that we may have another amendment from the beginning of the budget year?
Typically, you want to do a budget amendment like six months in. This one's a little sooner just because of some of the revenue, I didn't want to over project our revenue, so we wanted to look at that later and later. Hopefully, no emergency, be another one, but it always is working, you know, we look at those.
Any other questions? Comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Next, I have resolutions R-16-029. It is authorizing the mayor of the City of Princeton to enter into an employee leasing extension agreement with Doug Temps USA. This is a two-month extension contract for Mr. Noack, who has been working with us for an extended period of time to help us with finances. We know that this contract may be extended if needed on a month-to-month basis, and his primary focus to is to continue to assist Rachel on getting everything in order. Make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Comments?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. So Bob worked with us for about six months, and then he gave the financial presentation at a special council meeting in August. Some of the things that he presented there, obviously were things that needed to be corrected and fixed, so this recommendation is to keep him on for two months to help us correct some of those things and fix some of the things that he outlined in his presentation. In the memo, there's kind of a detailed list there of what he will be doing as part of the resolution.
Any further comments? Questions? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Newman. I'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening, we have our application to authorize the allocation of tourism funds to plant trees along Main Street. And I'll just read, the city council agreed to provide financial support for the planting of trees along Main Street from the tourism fund as suggested by the consensus reached at Saturday, August 20th, special meeting. So I believe we're just going to take a roll call vote on this, and I make a motion that we approve this. As Rick.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments?
Yes. As was brought up in that August 20th meeting, the statute clearly says that tourism funds are to attract non-resident overnight visitors to municipality. Upon legal advice, they suggest that we document if, in fact, we're going to use those for others other than that. I think we have failed to do that, and I think a yes vote would be a misappropriation of the funds.
Do you vote on that?
Can I ask, Mayor Querem, last year when we started with the Garrison Miller project, and I appreciate the 12 people that volunteered to make it work on that, and I appreciate the efforts they've done to make that evolve and working on that, but at the time, I believe, we earmarked up to $40,000. Was that going to come out as tourism dollars as well?
Correct.
I'm fully in support of this, and I appreciate where Bob's coming from, but I think that the, I think indeed, a good-looking streetscape on Main Street promotes tourism, and I just, I don't have any problem with that. I think that at the end of the day, how we interpret and how we're putting tourism dollars, we have the blessing of having four hotels out by the interstate that bring in toll tax, and I think that as we bring people into the community off of the interstate that are indeed possibly spending a night or two, they're looking at our downtown as a place to spend that night or two. I just came back from a five-day road trip, and when I got off the interstate to find a hotel, I looked at the downtown briefly to see how it looked, and I, when I see weeds and potholes and things like that, that was not the place I wanted to spend the night, even though that was just one night there. But I just think that tourism and your Main Street thoroughfare from the interstate is all part of interplaying together to enter the whole process.
You know, from the very beginning, I'll go back even further than that, when I first brought up the Garrison Miller project, when I first joined the council, talked about using tourism dollars to revamp Garrison Miller project, with the sole purpose of bringing more people to town, tourists, to come and spend money in our shops, give them the return, increase our sales tax revenue. This whole, everything, the trees on Main Street actually, and this is the planting of trees along Main Street, that's actually, that's a project that is actually being done with donated funds. I don't think any tourism money is going to be used for that. What we're talking about here is the parking lineup at the north lane in the town, getting that landscape projected a much nicer appearance to people as they cross railroad tracks and come into town. This is all geared, grand plan of bringing everything together, bringing people to town, shopping in our stores. You know, it's never been discussed, it's never been brought up, to my knowledge, that anything that we're doing is for the residents of Princeton for their sole enjoyment. Obviously, they will benefit from it, but they'll benefit from it in the end. As you get more people coming to town, shopping in our stores, that's what's going to decrease our sales tax revenue, and that is what funds our street department, to take care of our streets, our curbs and gutters, and that's a quality of life issue that all the residents of Princeton will reap, so.
Well, that in itself is not a correct use of tourist funds. Tourist funds is to promote overnight guest stays. That's what the statute says. We have legal opinion that agrees with that statute, and now we're trying to, you know, not heed that legal opinion.
Well, I read that opinion, and I think that opinion is pretty clear in that, yeah, if things do, you do want people to come to Princeton. Obviously, you can tourists come to Princeton, and you want them to spend a night or two. That all plays into it. I mean, we thought, here, let's look at the, we just paid, let me look at the, we just paid the Princeton group $1,600 out of tourism. Now, everybody that came out of town to see that, did they stay in town? Did nobody from Princeton go enjoy the ride?
No, read the statute, Joel. It doesn't, it doesn't. It's a convention.
I read the statute.
Apparently, you don't understand the statute.
Tourism or conventions.
So Doug, dealing with that then, are we saying that we're not going to be giving council to take the money out of tourism? That you're, you're taking appropriate expenditure. Inappropriate or appropriate? Is appropriate.
Planting trees in a parking lot is not going to attract overnight tourists in the grand scheme of things as we move forward. It needs to be documented. If our legal council has suggested that.
If it hasn't documented, I have written about and spoken about it for years.
The council has to adopt a document.
We're talking $2,000 to $3,000 to more than $5,000.
Doesn't matter if you're talking three cents. It's inappropriate spending of tourism funds, we'll agree to disagree.
Any further comment? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren.
No.
Commissioner Mabry.
Yes.
Commissioner Fabia.
No.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Mayor Querem.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Mabry. I'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Finally, I have ordinance O-16-016. It's an ordinance amending the Princeton City Code, Chapter 13, Utilities, Article Two, Electric Systems, Section 27, be amended as follows. We're deleting Section 13 to 27 entirely, including with the following. Basically, this is raising the rates by 6%. And we could be approving this ordinance.
I'm going to second that, that college elder bringing down.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments at this point? Rachel?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and, I don't really like reading from the memo, but there's a few points that I want to state. So I'm kind of going to go through the memo that was written regarding this increase. So in both 2008 and 2011, utility financial solutions completed a rate study for the City of Princeton. The City paid about $47,000 for those rate studies. Unfortunately, not all the recommendations of the rate study were enacted on by the City. So there's a chart on the first page of the memo, and from fiscal year 2010 through 2015, they recommended a cumulative total increase of around 37.8% in rates to stay, to keep everything going. However, during that time, the City only, hold on. Okay. The City only increased the rates by 14.6%. The last increase to our electric rate was in 2012, so there hasn't been an increase in the last four years. In both studies, UFS made the following statement, I'm going to read this just because I think it's important to note. The cash generated from operations is not sufficient to support the long-term operation and maintenance costs of the department. With operating adjustments, the operating loss of $1.7 million is projected in fiscal year 2012, and operating loss is currently $2.4 million in fiscal year 2015. There's also a chart in the memo that was provided by UFS and shows that declining tax reserves if rates were not raised, and it's now fiscal year 2015, and this is the present situation that we're finding ourselves in. So the current ordinance that we have kind of claws on the City's reserves, and in summary states that a minimum there must be attached that one to the operating account, at least one month's operating revenue, and in a separate reserve account, there should be a minimum of three months' operating revenue. So Bob Noak, who presented the financial presentation a month ago, you know, he kind of touched on this in our reserve account, which actually is allocated to a different fund, so those reserves are not intact. The current cash in the electric department ends of April 30th, 2015, and what will come out in our support mediators was around $1.4 million, so for the electric department. So for our bond ordinance, the City needs the funds for the electric department debt available May 1, 2016. That amount is outside of $100,000. And then also for the ordinance, operating cash should be one month's revenue, which is around $1 million. So we take those into consideration. We have about $1.4, which is our operating cash, and that's not the three million there for the reserves. So we have to obviously replenish those reserves. So going forward, City staff is going to work on an appropriate plan to replenish the reserves, look at all options, not just raising rates, obviously, but also cutting some operating expenses and everything else that we have to do to get those reserves where they need to be. This rate ordinance is just one small step in that plan. So a background on electricity, so the main reason for the rate increase comes from the Illinois municipal electric agency where we receive our electricity there, local units of government, and 32 municipalities are a part of that agency. So we purchase our electricity from them, and over the years, their cost per kilowatt-hour has increased significantly. There's also a chart in the memo that shows those increases over the years, and those increases have not been passed on to the residents and have kind of put us in a situation where in the day that the City has absorbed most of those increases. The chart shows throughout the years, their increases have varied from a negative 2% to a high of 15%. So the proposed ordinance that we're proposing is that a gradual increase each year, the stay-in-line of IMEA's increase, and not get too far behind and have to have large rate increases going forward. So IMEA has already notified the City of two increases that are coming shortly. The first one is a delivery service charge increase, and that's going to cost the City about $15,000 per month. The second one is a capital reserve adder increase that will cost around $30,000 per year, and then this is on top of any annual increase, which has not came out yet. So there's another chart on page, I don't know what page it is, but another chart on the memo that shows the estimated residential average cost per kilowatt hour for 2014 usage. If you look at it, the City of Princeton is number 12 on the chart, which is the fourth lowest municipality out of the 29 listed, and the sixth lowest out of all 50 combined electrics on there, which include industrial utilities, co-ops, and municipals. So as Bob mentioned, the proposed ordinance is recommending a 6% electric rate increase for the energy supply. There's no increases in the power cost adjustment, monthly user charge, or the end charges. This increase is not large enough to make up for the past years of no increases, and the new increase is coming, but it will allow the City to begin a stagnant recovery. Obviously, no one likes rate increases, and there's frustration there, so that's why we've compared ourselves with the 50 others to make sure that our rates aren't too high, but we also don't want to be in the very low income sector and not be able to cover our operating expenses. So the average cost of this increase to a typical residential customer is around $3.10 per month for the winter cycle, and $4.43 for the summer cycle. So in addition, the new ordinance proposes automatic increases that do not exceed 5% ordinance proposes automatic increases that do not exceed 5% every year. So, this would be based on a wholesale increase received from IMA in the amount not to exceed 5%. So, if the rate received from IMA is more than 5%, the council can choose to just pass on 5% of the full increase. In addition, if the increase is only 1% or 0.07%, that's the increase that will be passed on. This will allow us to make sure we're looking at our rates every year, being more accountable, and not go here with some increases and then have to put in place large increases. So, along with the rate increases, there are other things we need to look at over the years, and those are listed on the last page of the memo, but this is the first step in the right direction to make sure that we are competitive, comparable with other municipalities, as well as reestablishing our reserves and becoming financially stable.
Commissioner Querom, any further comments?
I'd like to make a couple quick comments, if I could. First, I want to thank Rachel and Jeff Mangrich. They sat down with me this morning to try to give me an education on how this plays, just the whole concept. And I had some questions about staffing, and this evening, respect for city employees, I'm not going to be discussing those staffing issues, but I would just say in overview that I felt that there was some overstaff going on, and again, I'm not here tonight to debate that, but you understand how I feel about that, and I made it very clear. I would like to say this, that you're approving tonight a rate increase that is so important, that this electric department is, I think it was so poorly handled. I know it's easy, I'm not going to start throwing rocks, but it's just, you know, we, last spring, we had a settlement from Ameren, it was a little over $52,000, and at the time, we were told we had $300,000 in reserves, so we ended up, the department head wanted to offer some program with thermostat and some other things, so $12,000 approximately spent towards that, but the additional $40,000 that was left was divvied up between four businesses in Princeton that applied for grants that they could pay, that the city would give up to $10,000. And so, we gave away $40,000 just last spring, and ironic that one of the grant applicants was our own paramour hospital, which only requested $6,000, and they were denied. So, I know as Commissioner, I ended up, at the very end, when they came out hoob, the four people, or four businesses getting those grants, I approved that, and I respectfully regret doing that. I think that was a poor choice of spending $52,000 that now we're looking for the nickels that are in the sofa. So, I think that, what I'm trying to say is, I think that as our department has conveyed to us, as well as our city manager, we have to, as city commissioners, we still have to do our due diligence and really investigate and feel good about what we're doing. And I feel like the electric department, you know, here we are now, we're asking for a rate increase of 6%, but literally, come two and a half months from now, come, I'm sorry, come January 1st of 2017, we could have another 5% increase over the six, possibly, up to 5%.
It would have to be approved beforehand, but it would be whatever IMA that created was for.
Right, but the way it reads in here now, though, it's odd, we...
It wouldn't be automatic, but it has to be passed by resolutions prior to getting where it is.
Okay.
So, it still has to be approved.
But it's still an automatic increase of up to 5%.
But in that group, right.
Okay, very good. So, here's where I'm at, as I rounded up my comments here about this. I visited with the City of Genesee this morning and discussed their residential rates, and I got that, and I gave that to Rachel as well as Jeff. And City of Genesee is not in the IMA, but they have a residential rate that actually will be much, well, I should say lower than ours, with no adjusted fees and no up charges, and we, again, we discussed that. And then I also looked at the city of Peru and what their rate is, and we discussed that as well. And we, I knew you were going to do a little more research on that. So, I don't think tonight I need to belittle that, but I just want to say one final comment. In dealing with the public, and when I first came on the council, like the second month I was on the council, we approved a sewer rate increase of approximately $500,000. And at that time, we waived the electric rate increase that was supposed to go into effect, and we were told at that time it was kind of a wash, that we had enough money in electric revenues, reserves, at that time, which was presumed to be $3 million, that we did not need that additional electric rate increase. So, we went ahead and we forego, we forgave that, or forego that, so to speak, with the idea that we were going to be asking the consumer, the ratepayer, to give in more for the sanitary sewer. So, it's going to be very awash. This evening, I just want to share with you, as we continue to raise our utility rates, I have a friend, she's on fixed income, she lives over on Gossie Boulevard, and she said I could share this. She relies on a social security payment of $1,089 every month. That is her sole income for her retirement. She's 72 years old. So, what happens is, every time we raise these rates, it affects her dramatically. And I just want to share her last month's electric bill, which is actually, it's overdue, but I want to just give you to your copy of this. I want to discuss this just briefly. So, we know when we start in by saying, you know, how high is your electric, well, we have to really distinguish, is it the electric or is it the water, the sewer? So, this particular lady that is on fixed income, her last month, because she asked for an air conditioning, was $100 for electric, and then she had her water of 16, and the sewer, of course, has doubled at the, whatever water is, just at another 16. And then, of course, we have our different service charges, the $11 for sewer, the $15 for water service charge. She gets a break on her electric service charge, I believe it's $3 for her, she's over 65, otherwise it's 7. And then she had her power cost adjustment and her water infrastructure. So, she ended up with a bill of about $200. Now, if we just look at her electric only, it's $100. So, in theory, if we have a 6% increase, that could easily be another $6 on that bill, on that base of the $100.
Her increase would be, what I quoted was around a 900 kilowatt hour user, which is what she is, would be the $3. It would be, where did that end in here? $3, around that.
Because it steps up, in other words.
Right, and it's only the energy, it's not the power cost adjustment or anything.
Right, and I appreciate that. You can see her electric loan was $100. Well, dovetailing in my smart side of this, but in order for me to feel good that I, when I'm approached tomorrow morning by people asking me why the electric rate was increased, especially somebody like this lady that's on social security and has no other form of income, and I don't believe that social security recipients have gotten a raise in a couple of years, obviously you can tell they're quite ready to get social security. But the point would be is, I feel that what I discussed with Rachel earlier today and Jeff Mangrich is, is I still feel we're overstaffed in a couple of positions, and I will not be voting in favor of this rate increase based on that. And if I can't, in all honesty, say that I feel that we have efficiently ran that electric department as best we could, even though we've got a new superintendent, I think he's doing an excellent job, I just think that it's just been a disaster with communication from that department. That's just my personal opinion in three and a half years. So, again, we gave away money last spring, few grants, and now we're trying to gather back money from other people. I just think we, we had opportunities, we should have been more on the ball.
Those grants that we gave away, were they subject to improvements made by those businesses?
They were subject to improvements needed for such things as anything lighting or electrical related, that enters a conservation.
Well...
So, there had to be some qualifications. We just didn't give them money. I would, I would agree with that.
Well, you didn't say that, though, Rachel. I mean, you're misleading the press and the public. You're saying we're just giving our money away to these businesses just because they're businesses. Well, that's not true.
And then I'll clarify, those were grants, just like I said with the hospital, they applied for a $6,000 grant. So, they were for related items that would improve energy efficiency. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you for clarifying that. So, I will be voting against this with the hopes that we can tighten up some things with our, in my opinion, overstaff.
Do we have any program in the city that would help people in need of financial help on our various levels? Do we, can they apply for something, and does this woman put into that, or could we provide her with some help to alleviate the bill of... I don't think the city does, but the state does, I believe. Also, is this lady on a budget with the city? No, she's not. That would be helpful. She was. She gives a lot of somebody's pain, maybe a little bit easier for her as well. But so, maybe she could, maybe you could help her, maybe put the state to some aid. And I, I think that what we have working right now in our electric department, our new superintendent, and I think our initiative council, and our new city manager have kept running together in terms of running the electric department. I hope you agree.
I think progress is really made. I think it's a long way to...
I would say, you know, it's unfortunate we find ourselves in this situation, and you know, unfortunately, it was just, you know, we were, we were told that our reserves were in fine shape, our rate structure was solid, and was keeping up with expenses, operating expenses, and you know, you rely on your city manager and the department head of the electric department to give you the information you need to make these decisions. Unfortunately, as evidenced by no rate increases in the last four years, and some, you know, some other things, that just certainly wasn't the case. So, it's very unfortunate. I'm going to, I am myself, I'm going to vote yes on this. I think it's something we, without question, we need to do. We need to get our lucky department healthy. We need to make sure that we're, our rate structure is right, so we are meeting our obligations with the IMA, and I think Rachel's got this, Jeff has got this right involved, and I think it's a positive thing. It's unfortunate, but I feel it's something we need to do.
Any other comment? Hold.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner, is it Warren? Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. Our ordinance is 0-16-017. It's an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Princeton, Illinois, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the emergency telephone system board of Bureau County for police dispatch services. I recommend that we approve this ordinance.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments, corrections? Rachel?
Yeah, so unfortunately, Diana Stiles, who sometimes was unable to attend, and I have no question for her, you know, if you get those to her camera or please, she was here answering questions as well. But essentially, this is for an agreement with BUCOM to do our police dispatch as well as our emergency fire. Currently, we do our own police dispatch, and the police department during the day and then after hours it goes to the county. The county is also going to be partnering with BUCOM, and they leave this same agreement that already went to the county board. If you have any questions, you have to answer them. So, the cost is $34,000 annually. Currently, right now, we're paying Bureau County $32,000. So, this is $2,000 more, but that price is watching for three years.
Any further comment? Some questions for the chief? Hold.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Fabia. And we'll see you in a minute. And I just have a couple things. I have a couple reappointments. Well, one reappointment and one appointment. First, the, do we do these together or one at a time? Your choice. Oh, one at a time?
One at a time, probably.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then for the reappointment of Terry Heinz for a three-year term on fire police measures.
I make a motion, we reappoint Terry Heinz for a three-year term expiring August 1st, 2019.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Hold.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. And also, entertain a motion for the appointment of Tracy Grimmer to the Industrial Development Commission.
I make a motion that we appoint Tracy Grimmer for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2019, to the Industrial Development Commission.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? This is to fill the vacancy left by Stephen the Chief, by the way. Hold.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Old business, any old business?
I just want to go back to that electric ordinance. We had mentioned that that was important, I think, that that came, that whole thing came as a study that was done by Bob Noack with GovTemp USA, as part of his, part of his involvement with our ongoing involvement with the state.
Any new business? Any public comment?
I would like to say just a couple things. I want to thank everyone. We got a very busy week coming, or the process of a very busy week. City crews have been out, they're doing a lot of work, getting to town ready for Homestead Festival, and just a ton of volunteers that have been involved in what's going to be just, I think, a great weekend. The weather's supposed to be, supposed to be great, so I'm looking forward to, you know, a great weekend. And again, thank you to all the volunteers, everybody that's involved with Homestead Weekend. I also have, I wrote something down, I wrote chief, I can't remember. Oh, yeah. I thought maybe you could come up and, speaking about Homesteads, do you have anything you got as far as any procedures going forward?
Well, I'd just like to say that we are being very proactive and getting Homestead ready to go. Obviously, last year, we had some concerns about the alcohol consumption and so forth along Main Street during the parade. And I just want to make comment that basically that I think what it comes down to is being responsible. I think we've put that message out. Everything I'm hearing and starting to see now is that it's going to be a parade that will be well managed and well monitored, especially by our department, to make sure that our community is, has a great time, and that the event is safe, and we don't have any issues. And basically, if a problem does arise, then we'll deal with it accordingly, and those people will have to deal with the consequences. But for the most part, I think it's going to be a great weekend.
Thank you, Chief. And any other public comment?
I will retain motion to adjourn to a second session. I hope that we adjourn to a second session to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body under Illinois statute. And then we convene for our next regular meeting on Monday, September 19th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall.
Motion's been seconded. Hold.
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querom?
Aye. Just being adjourned.